Right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, May seventh. Like to call the meeting to order. If please stand, I have a prayer for elected leadership I'd like to read. Oh, God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people, listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures, welcoming those seeking asylum, providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, public comment. Seeing none? Approval of the minutes. Put those back up here. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from April thirtieth, twenty twenty four?
Yes, I motion to accept.
Thank you.
Second.
It's moved in second in any discussion. Hearing none, moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Noel?
I don't think I have, I think.
Um, none today.
Okay. Um, I do not have any today as well. New business, um, ten o'clock. So we have, um, Clinton, McNamee, uh, Commissioner Rivas, County Commissioner. Do you wanna?
Yeah, yeah, come up if you want, I have a lawyer. So, um, Clinton reached out the other day to me regarding a couple of grants, uh, this is applied for, so I'll let him speak to a specific subordinates and basically just asked if we would do a support, uh, endorsement kind of letter for those, so.
Yes, so, uh, transportation alternatives is a program, uh, through KDOT. We've used it numerous times in the past for projects like the Main Street, sidewalk trail, uh, improvements a couple of years ago, the South Atchison Trail, North Second Street corridor improvements with the, with the pedestrian lighting and everything there. Uh, we did a safe, that's also includes a safe routes to school program. And so we did a, a series of sidewalk repairs on South Fifth, um, it's been several years ago now. We're in the design, hopefully ending the design phase of what we call Santa Fe West where we're doing Santa Fe Corridor west of AMS, uh, plus some, some north-south streets that kind of connect to that. Uh, that should be constructed, I don't know that it will be this year, but, um, I hope, I hope we can get to, to it this year. Uh, might be a winter project. So, we've utilized this program quite a bit, uh. We've applied numerous times through that program and also KDOT cost share for, uh, improvements to Unity Street, but in the way of curb and sidewalk improvements, accessibility improvements, crosswalk improvements, and then the pedestrian lighting. Um, that has not been successful through the TA program because they have wanted us to try to incorporate bike facilities, which has been challenging due to the, the narrow width of the street. Um, and then wait through cost share, I don't know that I've ever really received a, uh, an answer as to why that's not been successful, but I, I have always in my own speculation have thought that it was maybe because there wasn't necessarily an economic development, uh, component to it, um. Like, for example, when the mall was removed to convert back to Commercial Street, that was, that was a cost share program or cost share project. The, uh, distinction this time that I hope will result in a uh, successful grant application for Unity Street is that we've, we've shortened the scope of the project to between Second and Sixth Street. And so that it would mimic kind of the look of and function of North Second Street with the pedestrian lighting, but also include, include a crosswalk improvement at St. Benedict's. So if you can picture there in the two hundred block, there's some temporary semi-permanent things trying to make that crosswalk a little safer with the little rubber bump outs and the little reflectors. This would make it a concrete kind of an island, not island, but, uh, concrete medians on, on the edges and then also a lighted pedestrian activated crosswalk. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like a traffic signal. It would be push the button, lights flash to, uh, just give drivers the heads up that someone's using the crosswalk. Uh, and then the pedestrian lighting, um. And the kind of the justification and the, the hope that I have, the reason why that will be a successful application is that uh, as I'm sure anybody can observe, there, there is a lot of pedestrian activity along Unity, especially in that stretch of, of Unity. Uh, with, with eventual development happening. Uh, at Sixth and Unity, that could increase the amount of pedestrian activity. You know, I don't, you know, a lot significantly. So I'm hoping that will do that, uh. The Fifth Street application is through the Safe Routes to School program. So when we started doing that, we had to come up with a Safe Routes to School plan. It was based on AMS. And like I said, we've completed construction of our Stage One project, which was South Fifth, where awarded the second stage, which is San Anthony West, and that should be built this year or early next. And then this will be the application for the third phase of that, which is North Fifth from Unity to Santa Fe. And that is just sidewalk and curb and then some crosswalks, especially where the brick street and asphalt intersections are, and they're always a little bit, um, rough. So these would be placing those like they've done some others where it's just gonna be a concrete apron where the crosswalks are. And then it also included one of those pedestrian activated, uh, crosswalk lights at Fifth and Atchison, where the, where the green paint is.
Mm-hmm.
And it's currently estimated to be about one point six to one point seven million for both projects. It's an eighty-twenty match. The, I suspect that we might not get the Sa- Safe Routes project because the other one is not built yet. Sometimes they've given us that feedback in the past on these grants that, um, they don't get built. From the time of award to the time of construction is rarely the year. And so you're applying for the next one before you get the other one built. And sometimes they, uh, depend, I think sometimes it depends on how competitive and how many applications that they get. They try not to stack them up in one place, I think, so, um. Yeah, my fingers crossed that we get both of them, but, uh, I think we're probably prioritizing the Unity Street project at this point, just for the fact that it might not be realistic to expect them to to award us two Safe Route, Safe Routes projects at the same time. But yeah, and we, we asked for letters of support from different entities to include the county. Uh, that's part of the application process. It, uh, it shows that that the community is behind these applications and that it's been talked about and that it's uh, been a priority. And, uh, and I think with Unity specifically, we can show that that's been a priority for a number of years. Just due to the, if nothing else, due to the multiple applications that we've submitted in the past. So I, I appreciate you, appreciate the county considering, you know, authorizing some letters of support for our projects and.
Yeah, absolutely.
You mentioned possible, uh, development at Sixth and Unity. Is that the school? Has there been movement on that or?
I don't know how much information is out there yet, and I, I don't want to be the one to, to, to release that, but, uh, um. I think it's known that the college has acquired the, um, old school building there at Sixth and Unity and, uh, and what their ultimate plans are there. And I think that'll be up to them to to share that with the world, so.
We appreciate you and all the projects and grants you're going for. So you always have our support. We'd be happy to give a letter and appreciate you coming and letting us know what's going on and that Unity project will be great as well as Safe Routes to School. So good luck on both of them and you have, um.
You agree, I think you have.
Oh, yes.
I thought we had a copy of those. Yeah, we did swim copy these stuff, but.
How do we need a motion or?
We already have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, yes.
Okay, yes. All right, so I'd look for a motion, um, to sign a letter of support, um, to KDOT for the project, um, on North Fifth Street, Safe Routes to School, as presented by Clinton McNamee, City of Atchison. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sure.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. And then email to Clinton. Okay. We'll put them in this folder and get them scanned in and then email you a copy if that works or we can give you the.
Did you need the original?
I do not.
Okay.
I was also.
To you today.
The applications are submitted digitally, so.
Perfect. Okay, so, um, I have, I would look for a motion to approve a letter of support, um, to KDOT for the Unity Street Corridor improvements, um, as presented by Clint McNamee from the City of Atchison. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sure. Second.
It's moved in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks. I'm really thankful that the city of town actually gives us.
Yes, I love it. Okay, next we have, uh, Travis Grossman. He's the Memorial Hall Trustee for the twenty twenty-five appropriation requests.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've got, and I know you guys were giving this in your, but I wonder what we, we put some numbers with this as well. So we got usage here, Gary. Usage numbers.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah. To give you an idea of what it is we have.
Boats getting blown it out of the water.
Right. Thank you, you're welcome. Just to give you an idea how many folks that come and go in that building, because it's one thing to look at activities and, and it's just another to actually, to, to look and see for for your edification, how many bodies actually come and go. So we can kind of get an idea of usage to the building. Um, as you guys know, our budget had been cut last year from thirty to ten. And so looking at our, our end of year, um, our year-to-date up until April and, uh, looking at our budget for the next year, our hope is that we can get, at least get back to that thirty thousand dollar mark. Um, when we look at all of the, uh, events that we do there and, uh, the trustees are also working to put more events in there. So we're looking to try to garner a few more dollars. Uh, we just had a, a concert in there, first time in a long time. We've had a, you know, somewhat major event, as it were. Uh, it was very successful. I thought, uh, we've worked up quite a few of the bugs out, which is great. So getting the stage loaded in, sound, lighting, all that kind of stuff, figured out what we needed to do different. Um, and then we've got three more of those, uh, planned, as well as we're going to try to bring back roller derby, which would be kind of a fun thing. I mean.
That was fun to watch.
It was. And so we've got a group out at Topeka that we're, uh, courting, you might say, to try to get them up here. And they've got, I think, four or five events that they want to do, but they're really community oriented. So they've got an idea that they want to bring, use the rec commission skates and kind of get kids involved and have not only their events, but then get the crowd involved. Hey, strap some skates on, come out and be a part of this. So, um, they've got a couple of, I mentioned events that they planned and they're two-day events too. So we're looking at renting the space to them on a Saturday and a Sunday, be twelve-hour days, they'd set up, do their event cleanup, be gone. Um, so it's, it's pretty neat. So we're looking at some neat things, some new things, uh, different uses of the building, uh, to increase what we have going on there, but we can't do it without your help, obviously. Um, if we took the, uh, rec commission out of the picture and looked at what we as trustees would have to come up with, our responsibilities per se, it, it, it goes, it, it's above and beyond the thirty thousand dollar mark even. When we look at having to keep the heating and cooling on in that building, in my mind, that's the number one job we have to do. The utilities need to stay on that floor buckles. The floor buckles, the place isn't usable. And I don't know if you remember the history of that, but that happened once before. And so when the building went neglect, floor buckled, couldn't even use it for volleyball, basketball, or anything else. So that, that needs to be done. And our utility costs, I don't have to tell any of you, you guys pay your bills at home, you know that utility costs have gone through the roof. We're not making it right now. And, uh, our fear is, is that we will have to shut that side of the facility down for any usage, um. And then basically turn the keys back over to you if we can't get to the end of the year. Now, we do have some surplus currently in our bank. Well, we've got some plans with that. We had asked early on, when we went through that process of, of realizing what work needed to be done on the building, um, one of the, one of the issues or projects that came to the top was, was the electrical needed, not just upgraded, but we needed, uh, new lighting in the building really bad. Those, those lights that we have now, they suck a lot of energy. They're not terribly great. They don't give a lot of, uh, light. Whereas these new LED lights would be cheaper to run, et cetera, but they're kind of expensive to put in. So we've had bids on that. We're looking at having a company come in and redo the lighting in the building, both in the gym and also the hallways and all the ancillary areas of the memorial hall, not the offices necessarily, but the memorial hall part of it. Um, and we're hoping that will save us some money in utilities going forward. Those mercury vapor lights being on all day, it just make the, the, the little wheel on the electric meter spin. Uh, and then we also looking at some railings, putting in some new railings too, because that's a big concern of ours. I know I voiced that maybe before you were here, back when Jack was in your seat, uh, just, just the safety factor, having people sit up there, which they enjoy doing, but having them fall too would be. Like, I think now that we're all aware, we current trustees are all aware of how dangerous that is. We feel obligated to try to do something about that. So we have an individual that looked at the architect's plans that we'd had, you guys had paid to come in and do an assessment on the entire building. And they gave up a really good engineered drawing on how that hand railing ought to look and how, how it ought to be built. Sent that off to a fabricator and, uh, he's got a price back for us and is willing to build them and install them. And so we're looking at having that done and we're gonna kind of piecemeal that as we go too, yeah. So we'll start over with the actual seating is and get that done first, since a lot of people just, they'll sit up there for the seating. That's gonna be, but yes, if you've been to any events, you see stragglers that sit all around the space. So, and the hope is one day that maybe we'll have a, uh, seating in all of that space. If we can, we could find it, get it all to match and put it all together. So that's the big hope, the big dream. And if you've got any questions about any of what I just shared or the budgets or financials that we have, be glad to try to answer any questions that I can.
They refinish the gym for fifteen hundred, seems like quite a buy.
It's, it's nice, we do that once a year. Because if we don't, it'll get the scratches and the scuffs do get so severe that it wouldn't be fifteen hundred dollars. So what they do is they come in and they'll do a kind of, not even, they don't strip it so much as they, they'll rough the entire floor up, vacuum and mop it down and then put a new gloss coat on it. So we're building and maintaining the floor as we go and, you know. It, it, our fear is to get into the paint that's on that floor. Then you really have a nasty looking situation. Currently, we've been able to keep it clean. Even to the point where if we have, uh, chairs scratch the floor, well, we'll have the guy come in and actually do that spot on the floor and stay up with it so that it can stay pretty uniform looking.
With the concert, did the logistics work out pretty good?
The logistics did, uh, the, the particular, the, this Terry Nelson that did, uh, the production, he was the promoter, you might say. He needs better lighting, but, um, the electricity that we, we'd had some additional plugs installed for him to ring his system in more than adequate. So that was great to have his big sound system that was able to get that electrical system carried it. We were grateful for that. You just don't know in an old building. Um, he needs to invest in, in a little bit more lighting, but, uh, he knows that now. So going forward, I think he's got some of those figured out. We have another concert country and I think blues uh, scheduled in June, and then we have two more in September, a Leonard Skinnerd, um, sound-alike band, you might say, coming in September, and he's got a fourth one on the books. We just don't have a date for it yet. So we're looking forward to getting that together. He's got some really big names that he'd like to bring in. We're just, I told him, let's just bite these little things off and get all the details figured out in the space. And if it works, great, then we can look at it going down the pipe. So we'll see.
Did you have a good crowd for the?
It wasn't great by any means. I bet there was a hundred people that came and went that night. You know, you'd like to have a thousand, obviously, um. But it was a good start and it was a nice way to kind of, uh, break the ice and figure out what we needed to do. And we didn't have a bunch of people. Security was an issue, for example. You know, if you had a thousand people there, you'd want to have people at every door. And we didn't need that. So that was kind of nice, kind of figured out where the weak spots and, and the infrastructure were, what we really needed to do again. It was nice to be able to get a crowd in there and then figure out just the walking, you know, what lighting do we need to have on to get people from off the floor and into the restroom safely? And what do we need to have upstairs? And just all those details, stuff that I didn't really, I knew we needed to look at, but just didn't know the answers to until we had the event, we're able to kind of go through and go, okay, there's a dark spot up there, we should fix that. Okay, we need to have that, et cetera, et cetera. So it was nice that we were able to kind of figure that out. And this Duke Tomato, he's, uh, he was a uh, original founder of REO Speedwagon. So he's a music legend in his own right and, and kind of a godic cult following. So I think Topeka, their XMF series radio was there and recorded his concerts so they could put it and play it later dates over their radio show, Bob and Tom Show. We had people there from Seneca that, uh, loved him, people there from Iowa that know of him that came down from Iowa. So although it wasn't a big crowd, there were a lot of folks from out of town. It's pretty surprising. And he's seventy-six years old. So, uh, this guy, you probably, probably not gonna see him live again, not in this area, you know? Uh, but he's neat, neat fella, a lot of, a lot of energy for seventy-six and can still play and sing. You close your eyes and think there's a thirty-year-old man on stage just getting it.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Willie Nelson's still singing.
Yeah, but Willie Nelson sounds like he shouldn't be singing. You know, this guy, you could close your eyes and think, man, this guy, he sounds like that kind of the air supply era of, you know? He's got an incredible voice for his age. So I was impressed with the whole thing. But, and I guess too, this, I didn't, uh, having not worked with this Terry Nelson prior, this was our first kind of partnership together. It was nice to kind of get the bugs worked out of, you know, the ebb and flow of that, get to know him and, and he delivered where he said he would. And so that puts some confidence in the trustees that he's gonna kind of can, continue to do that for us. So that was exciting. Any other questions or anything I can answer for you?
Uh, you and I had a discussion about, um, going down, going forward as far as the building, uh, uh, tuck pointing was mentioned before.
Correct, that's right. Uh. Yeah, that came in a lot higher than we thought.
Yeah, and then I know a lot of, if you do it in three phases, you pay a lot more because it's.
Right, they gotta reset, reset, yeah.
But, but I don't know, there's, uh, any angles for some grants because of historical building and all that?
Right.
Or we have, is there some direction we need to deal with?
You know, Mark and I talked about that gosh back a while ago, yeah. And I'm sure that there's something out there. Um, it'd just be a matter of us getting together, putting our heads together and our skills together to kind of, to find it, find it.
There was a, at the, uh, meeting in Pittsburgh, uh, B I L is the acronym. But it sounds like there's a, there's some, I think some possibilities and he.
Thoughts that aren't being used, yeah.
Yeah, there's grants not being used and, uh, the one that's portrayed is there's only a couple of million bucks available, but then you find out, you get turned out from that, there's actually a hole in the pot of money where they actually have a lot more.
Step through one door to get to another.
Yeah, and so the guy who, I can't get his name, but he, uh, I've got it written somewhere.
That's what I was telling Mark this morning. I have his name in my notes on my.
He wanted to come up here and do a presentation. So I thought that may be a good, just to dovetail this up.
Well, yeah, if you could let us know so we could be a part of that.
Have, but maybe the city be aware of, maybe in Napreham, some people in the area know it had maybe one time when he comes up, had this presentation on what's available out there. It's sounds like there's a lot that where it's not accessing.
Yep.
I'm not surprised.
So anyway, but I, that's something to keep on the forefront.
Good, good.
It's to me, our responsibility at this level is the building and the facilities and.
Agreed, agreed.
You guys do programming is great, but.
Well, and yeah, we're doing programming, but just to make a little more money and, and to get the building, uh, I would say from my personal standpoint, turned over to, in use for more than just a jamaise. To have that, that history of the music come back to Atchison and the performance aspect, I think it's, it's neat. And so to be able to have that, I think the French phrases, that full muse en scène, or that big picture, to get all of that put together, to have this space to actually work and function the way it used to and what it was meant to be for. And so I, I think it's really cool. We're, we're working towards that and we're, we're finding success, so. We need your help. Yeah. So please consider the, uh, the, maybe to get back to that thirty thousand dollar mark, that would be, that would be great. Just so we can maintain the building itself and then figure out a way to, uh, earn some extra money along the way that we can use for some of the things we want to accomplish.
Say thirty, but only, uh, I think it says forty.
Oh, okay. So we did put it in the budget as forty. Okay. Well, I wasn't sure what we guys should have looked at over. Okay, well then forty, we'll take thirty then on, and on top of the ten would be great. As you know, that thirty thousand dollar mark is where they've been for since before we were ever involved in politics here. So the addition, if you can look at our twenty-five going forward, you can see the bottom line, uh, what we're projecting our cost to be is seventy-seven five sixty, then that's, it's, you know, up from where we had been typically running around the fifty-five to sixty thousand dollar mark. Actually, he's got forty-six, seven. The count, I don't know why. But anyway, yeah. Can we come up off a ten? I guess that's what I'm asking. That's really, can you know, find some middle ground here or something?
A lot of the frustrations last year weren't as much things within your control of us, maybe some other issues down there, so.
Understood.
And, and I wondered, I, I really think I did the impression we really need to probably have a more clear agreement between the rec commission and the trustees as to who is in charge of what, who pays for what, and what's a maintenance thing versus what's capital improvement, maybe define those things. And it would maybe work towards getting that documentation over the next couple of months that.
Yeah, so I don't, yeah, have you, how do you, yes is the answer. I think you're right. We need to have that.
That's that start, I'm not sure.
Right. Who needs to write it up? Who should agree to that? I mean, obviously we need to agree to it, but who needs to write it up? Who's opinion, you know? We're gonna sit and go back and forth on it. Obviously, we probably will. There's probably one camp thinks that, you know, there are more things that need to be done than the other camp potentially, or we might find out that, yeah, we both agree with it and realize the expenses are there, we just need to cover them.
Yeah, maybe stipulations, the way rec commissions were set up, the way that middle limit flows through there, maybe there's some rules around those dictate some of this.
Yeah, and I don't know, Pat, if you've gotten it or Mark, anybody, I, if we got any information historically, what or how the trustees have run, um, or what, under what parameters we've run?
I think it's been sporadic that we've gotten a copy of the, the budget, or at least that I have seen the, the budget from the trustees. I mean, I know we have some years for sure. I, I don't know if we have all.
But as far as like any sort of operational or SOP or anything like that, standard operating procedures or, or agreements, you don't know of anything?
I, I don't know of anything in writing, no.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so. There's that.
I'd be happy to help with, with writing it, but I, I don't want to make it up myself.
Understood, yeah.
We would say this is the agreement that we have.
We can workshop it. That's it, that is a good idea. Yeah, I think we need to just look at it as its entity and then who is in charge of what and split it out, you know? We, we can depart the rec commission from that and, and think of it as just the trustees and, and county commissioners. And if that building stood alone there by itself with no other in, input, what's our responsibility of that? Do we need to, with the lawn care, the facility, uh, utilities, et cetera, et cetera, all of that, you know, just think about that. And that, that'd be a good, easy way to start, you know, just in terms of black and white.
That'd probably be the best, you know, for working document from our perspective to them to say, here's what we're proposing and to make this clear to everybody and.
Yeah.
That we can negotiate.
Because honestly, the trustees are here to make your job easier. That was the whole point. The building was built and trusted to the county. And for you not to have to worry about it, you give us X amount of bucks, we would take that, maintain the building. So it's not something you have to put your fingers and hands on and think about. So we're, I mean, the trustees are here as an extension, uh, or a help to the county commission. And we want to be that, but we also, and, and I think we all in the room agree that we want to also do for our community. You know, that's the reason the building's there is to benefit the community, to give it a nice big meeting space for families to come and enjoy space and time together, so. Maintain that. Right, alright, good.
I had any, um, documentation over the past few years. We did a resolution for not smoking in the building, but beyond that, I don't have any.
That's a good idea.
So. Awesome.
All right, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Clint Hibs, BG Consultants.
We were gonna go into, uh, workshop.
Okay, so we will recess, uh, into workshop. Clint Hibs, BG Consultants for Road and Bridge Discussion. Do I have a motion?
Sure. Sorry, second.
Okay, moved in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session. Um, Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge Superintendent, Department Update, Purchase Order Approval, MH, at Site Number Two in Ottawa Road.
All right, I have a purchase order to pay Hebert Construction for Site Number Two. Uh, there was a change order for adding gravel in between the, uh, the two, the culvert being finished and the temperature being where they could lay asphalt. And it was a it was part of the change order. And then the other was, we had to cut back more of the asphalt to fix, there were some problems. So it totaled seven thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-two cents on the change order. So the total amount would be one hundred eighty thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
And this is the one you explained this morning that they were gonna do like this and you.
Yeah, so.
We're not leaving it like this in the middle of the road.
No, they were gonna wedge both ends. No, they were gonna wedge both ends, and then the people would have to drive down the wedge and back up the wedge. And I didn't feel like it was safe, and that aggregate base was twenty five hundred dollars and three cents, or three dollars, twenty five oh three, seventy two more. To, to fill it full of gravel, and then the, uh, it was forty six hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents for the extra. H M A, commercial grade, had asphalt.
It's just the same side where they had to redo.
Yes, yes, but that had nothing to do, nothing to do with them redoing it. It's just when the engineers went out and they measured and they looked at it where some of it was breaking. They called me and we went out and we decided to go ahead and, and fix it, what we thought would be better than the way it was.
All right, I have a purchase order as presented from our Road and Bridge Superintendent, Ebert Construction, um. What, the original was approved, so you just need the change order?
Yes.
So a change order in the amount of seven thousand one hundred ninety four dollars and thirty two cents, have a motion to approve.
So move, second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, moved in second, and all those in favor say aye, aye, passes. Three to zero.
Uh, I've got a couple other things here. On the bridge, M point oh twenty six four, on the collision part.
Independence Creek?
Yes, uh, I'm asking for the authority. The P O, previous P O was overestimated for deck repair by thirty four thousand dollars. And we have a, a collision repair of twenty three thousand one hundred fifty five dollars extra. And I was just wanting the okay to go ahead and tell a Comanche Construction that they can fix that.
And that is because of the insurance discussion of paying fifty thousand?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
So the insurance is paying fifty thousand, the twenty three is in addition to that, we have to.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
And I just, I just want the okay to go ahead and.
It's within the previous purchase order.
It's, it's actually eleven thousand, roughly less.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I guess, um, that's what I'm wanting.
Yeah, we just, yeah, I appreciate the clarification of where and what it's paying for.
Yes. And then I've got, uh, before I get into the bridge. So we have talked about, uh, what we're gonna try to do to fix Cheyenne Road. In the last meeting, it was brought up about, uh, leasing equipment. Um, so Cheyenne Road, we had figured in our, uh, road plan. A hundred and one thousand dollars to chip and seal and try to fix the middle of the road, that. Uh, gravel part, gravel section, so with renting the equipment. And doing the base one, it comes out. Uh, so it was an eleven or twelve thousand dollars more. I got all my papers mixed up, I'm sorry, with everything we had going on.
I think it was thirteen and.
Thirteen.
Hold on. Yeah.
Sorry.
You're good, it's right.
So that's a base one, which is mixing the chemical in with the aggregate that you tell up. And then will there be, is that a chip and seal over the top?
So then we, we'll sit for six to eight weeks and then we will come back and chip and seal.
And that's included in that?
Yes, and then we will chip and seal the whole road, that's included in that extra of thirteen thousand.
Okay, so, so last week when he presented, um, the water tank was a lease payment for thirty five thousand. So the total needed was like seventy five thousand and change, but then when we talked about, um, just renting the tank. Then it came back as, hold on, I have it. Thirteen, so more than the original road plan, just thirteen thousand one seventy five sixty five. Because you'll get forty hours with the water tank, um, rented for the week of three thousand dollars. So instead of purchasing it on a lease payment of thirty five thousand payments, it's three thousand for forty hours to do this road. See if we like the product of base one, so I think that's a really great.
Right, and then, and then, uh, if we have it and that goes good, we have a couple other little short roads. That we have talked about possibly trying to do that while it's here, because the rents for, for the week. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that.
You worked a five day week that week, then?
It depends upon how, or, well, yeah, it, it goes, so a week is forty hours.
Oh, okay.
Cause I asked that question, if it rains, I talk to my rep, they work with you, but it's, but like a month is, is, uh. Hundred and sixty hours, you know, but a week is forty hours, so I'm guessing it's the forty hours on the equipment. But I just wanted to get the permission to go ahead and try to schedule getting this equipment leased, because we have to put our name in. And pick a certain week, and then when it comes in, then that's when we do the work.
That sounds good to me, I would love you, um, to communicate when that'll be, because with the microfiber or, or microseal, we got to go out and watch. For this new product, I just think it'd be interesting to watch the application and that way we can see how it turns out and.
And I think other entities that might be interested in the product, or, you know, invite them to.
Yeah.
Are other counties using this around, or?
There's other counties, not a lot of them close, but there's, there's several counties in Kansas starting to do it.
I think that opens up a great channel to invite them to, it's like, we're trying this out, this is when we're doing it, and you're welcome to come look.
So these guys were actually at the Kansas County Commission Association Meeting, and they were hitting it, hitting it hard with counties and. Theirs success stories and all the things and showing the product and it was, I think it'll be.
And so much commissioners as much as the Roden Bridge Superintendents of the counties.
No, a hundred percent, they've already done that, because they came up and they're like, hey, we know Joe Snyder, but we'd like to meet you guys.
Well, but I need for them to come vi- view it.
Yeah.
And, and to explain to everybody, we went to Buchanan County the last week or the week before. Alan was, we had a, we had a meeting and we went to Buchanan County and watched the way they did it, looked at their, looked at their finished products, so.
So they were putting it down when you went?
Those are the videos.
Oh, that's right.
I was the.
Was that at Kintry Creek, you said?
No, that, actually, you would go to, uh, you know, where Hy-Vee or what's the?
It's on that road.
That road.
Okay, yep.
So where Kovacs, where Kovacs, you know where Kovacs fireworks is? You just go just south of that and you take it out, and it'll take you.
I knew that was mentioned.
Okay.
But I, I also, I also want to let you know that we're gonna core drill that, because I want to know what's underneath there. So if we need to add millings, we take the millings that we have out that, at the landfill. And we would spread them on the road if we need them, and then the machine will, will mill that right and incorporate that right into the road. And I want to, I'm core drilling the whole section of road, so that if we like this. And we want to do the rest of the road, I know what's underneath there, so we know what we're working with. Uh, Ryan went out this morning, there's one tube we have to replace on the gravel section, and that will be done as soon as we possibly can. The rest of them are all good, so we want to try to, we want to try to get all that done before we do the project.
Joe, I was, I was thinking about when you bought that week, that you made my discussion with your.
I will.
Forty hour week, you're gonna have more than forty hours.
Well, they, honestly, they said after the first day, if everything is going well. Uh, we can do a mile a day, well, that's a mile and a half, so if we do a half a mile on the first day, we may be done the second day and have. But like you said, we can go to one of, possibly one of these other places.
I would, yeah.
And just, just try it and see what happens with, we need more, came up, cost us a little more, but.
Yeah.
Uh, and they're up with it, if our low boy will haul it, we can hire. Any contractor around here who has low boy that will fit to haul the machine for us if we need it, it doesn't have to be from where we're running.
I'd include Clint in that list of invitees, because several of the road would be a good solution for them.
Yeah, I know, I would like to see it, it was really interesting watching that microseal process.
So hopefully, hopefully this works.
Seriously, you keep saying that, just do it, I need you to do that.
It goes so fast.
Can we let, can we let Commissioner Davis please straighten the milling machine?
I think if you heard a wreck, you know, I'm telling you, it's.
If you go through the windshield, you might have to go see your dentist.
Right.
I had Ottawa Road on there, so we're waiting on. The, uh, till the ninth, and then we'll get together and pick who's gonna be the engineer, I will and Gabe. On, uh, that part, I had some people out there looking at the culverts, I want to try to get the culverts done before we start the project. Project bid, this is the cost share, the project bid is in like an October, we actually have six months after that date to have it let. So if, if you're concerned about that, I've, I've done a lot of checking into that, so hopefully before long, we'll be doing some surveying and. And start, start getting that where it needs to be. Uh, the bridges, on and off system bridges, like you have a chance to look at those. I was hoping we'd have time in workshop to do this, but we didn't. So, so everybody knows there is a, an off system bridge application. For all the, all the off system bridges, and then the on system would go in the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Plan. My department, we went through and, and narrowed it down to what we think would be four bridges. That would be attractive on the on system and I think five or six on the off system. I've brought it to the commissioners to let them choose which ones we would like to apply for, uh, that has to be turned in by the twenty fourth. And if we can do a one, two, three, rank them, then if, if, uh, K dot sees something. That, uh, we don't, and one of them's more attractive to them, that gives them another option to, to pick from. So I didn't know if you guys had came up with, with which ones or.
So you're doing the off system and then you're also asking for the on system for the.
Yeah, because they, they have to be turned in at the same time.
Okay. So I went and looked at all of them and sent you my feedback, um. It, it's hard because it, like, not knowing the costs, right, I mean, any cost share program sounds awesome. But when you look at the traffic counts and, and where these are, I mean, but also on the flip side of that, they're poor. So you're gonna have to do it one way or another, so it's better to, to have that, um. I feel like my top was probably the Phillips Road deck completion, um. I.
Twenty three point oh nine.
Okay.
So and the reason I like, so I like the project because it definitely needs to be completed. Um, I love that it didn't have a, a weight restriction on the rating and the structure that itself was good. Other than the deck, um, I was curious what the cost is to replace the deck, and the only reason that was is. If it's small, does it make more sense to go for a bridge that's more expensive versus that?
That's a free decking.
Yeah, it was a bus route and a mail route, but it only showed forty as a traffic count.
Yeah, but that's probably.
Way low, I think.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's so many people that utilize that area, um, so. Depending on cost, if the cost was low, I would almost go for a bigger one. Um, so the next three or the other four, in my opinion.
That's off system, so.
Well, that's what you need.
You're gonna do, okay, right. Right.
But I'm just, because I'm not completely confident, I'm, I'm telling you my opinion, I'm looking forward to hearing theirs, but. The traffic counts and the fact that several of them aren't a bus route, aren't, you know? I was wondering if we could apply for, so everything I'm hearing is regionalized and try to make it worth your. Could you do both of them on Cheyenne and Clay, to where you know they're both poor and they both need it? And they're right next to one another, could you put a package together?
Well, I don't know that they will, I don't know.
That's the two out here.
Because when you look at them, it's, I mean, the traffic counts are way low, but they need it. And I clarified with Joe whether or not a tube would ever work, because right now the water was low. And it doesn't look like you need this massive bridge replacement, but he agreed, he said they both need bridges, like. A culvert won't work.
That's my question, too.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot of water, a lot of water.
So I was just wondering if we could apply and, and explain, like, they're literally feet apart, you can walk to them. If you could do an application for both of those, because they're right there, that's your big chunk, I would go for that, and then we still. Would have, you know, do the deck, but.
Call one, the project.
Yeah, I think so, and.
Be cost feasible, but is there any way that there could be, if you could have the right of way or the easement to go in there? And put that together into one, run it all in one bridge, like go upstream.
Well, then you, you have to get into the, talk to the core and you have to, you have to do a lot of.
That's probably more not worth it, but you know what I'm saying, then you would have one structure. On, on that, even though it would be a bigger bridge, would that be more cost effective? The last time I looked at that.
I can ask about. About that, but that's something that, basically what, what we're doing today is, we're prioritizing. If you want the slab one, that would be, if you all vote for putting a new slab, that would be our number one. On the list to apply for, we're, if we get one out of the two off and on system, we'll be lucky. You understand what I'm saying? So one year we got lucky, people didn't spend their money, and I applied for, for, had a first and a second. And the reason why it turned out is we had the second, number two, we got money and we did both bridges. So that's why we kind of do the, the one, two, three, and then we send them in and then we go from there. So, uh, probably Casey, I don't think we'll probably be able to combine those two, I can ask. But if, if twenty three point oh nine is, is your vote, then what would be your second vote? If you had to pick one bridge for the off system?
So if you can't do Cheyenne and Clay together?
Right, what would be your, what would be your next one?
Phillips Road.
Well, that's number one, Phillips Road's number one, that's number one option.
Well.
Then, then you have a, the number two, you.
So what I would say, sorry, with cost share and getting eighty or ninety percent paid. In my brain, two bridge structures is gonna cost more than a deck replacement.
Right, but.
So I was thinking if it's feasible that you could apply for those two, that would be my, my number one, because you're getting more.
That's not, you're, that's your number one.
That would be more bang for your buck, but if you're not able to, then the deck would be because of the, all the things. I mean, because we still need to do the deck, but I was looking at some of the costs of what we paid for the Deck of Independence, and it's like. If that's cheap, we want the cost share on the bigger money, on the bigger expense.
Sure.
Um, so that was my rationalization, so that's why I.
I think that with the B N Z's two structures, without me finding out, it's gonna be hard to apply to both structures, but I could, but I can ask.
Even if they can see like from here to there.
Well, I, I understand, but, but, but those two in that, those are your three.
Yeah.
Okay, moment, how you slice it.
Yeah, so if you can't do the two together, then Phillips, because it.
So then what would be another one, if I can't do those two together? Well, now, we're, we're still on the off systems, so on the off system, you would, you would have. You would have, uh, twenty five point three H one, which is the one we, on Sheridan Road that we've applied for before.
So if you can't do the two of them, my second was Jewel.
It's Jewel, okay, and what would your third be?
Look a coin, I guess, Cheyenne and Clay, one of them, they both, I mean, need it, I just.
Let's, let's go with the, uh, the longer of the two.
Even though the traffic count, I was also being mindful of, if this bridge is out. How do I travel, right, and that's why I ranked. Sheridan last, because. It both has access to Sherman really easily, so if it's out, it's not inconveniencing anyone. Like some of these others, if that bridge is out, you gotta go, you, you know, and so those are the thoughts I had when I was. On the sites of like, okay, if this was out today, where would I go to get out of here? And, and that's the.
I'll just put six, six, because either one of them.
Either one would be good.
Eric, I'm sorry, are you?
Yeah, on off system, that's my thoughts.
You know, I'm really torn on this about here Cheyenne and Clay, because in a way it don't make sense to do one.
I know, that's, that's the truth.
And, and that's where, I mean, if we could definitely, if we could get that into a one.
And, and there may be a way to put a, a big box in there, I'll have to talk to Dave about all of that, so.
And if we could combine them, or if it could be one project, and that, that makes. And I hadn't really thought of it as one project.
Hundred percent, and they've been pushing that.
Yeah, one of them's a lot longer.
Okay, what if that's the bridge project, we do a box culvert on the other one?
That's possible, really.
That solves the problem without doing it. Who has the, uh? The ground. That flows to the north, there doesn't. Or does that?
That call comes out of dad's plate.
Oh, yeah, out of, yeah, wow, um, so, so if that came out of there. That would, who owns that ground on the north side? Is that two different owners?
Well, Tyler's own it on the east side and on the west side, it goes up three bankses. Well, it goes clear, it goes clear, you know where my brother lives, he's got that watershed dam, comes clear off the rise ranch, clears through there, down through Tilly's. Comes out, dumps there.
At the structure.
At the structure, that is, uh, I think it's George Royer.
Okay, I was just wondering if they, if there was a way of putting that together, whether we would have a fight on.
I just think in everything that we hear, um, even at KCCA, they were saying for cost share applications. Regionalize, work with people, find things that you can kill two birds with one stone. And so to me, it's like, if we explain to them, cause if they're just looking at our bridge numbers, like. Right, until you go out there and see like, oh wow, it's literally a stone's throw, we wanna do both of these for one application, maybe they'll.
I just, I just know this and, and remember this, that if it's on a bus route, mail route. And it makes a big difference. Those are two of the first things they look at. With the structure, so.
That was my thing when I went and looked at him, I was like, is this all we have to choose from? Because that's what I asked you by the numbers, but you said, those are the.
This is the cry, the only poor. Now, you can go down here and three point oh, I point one is a fracture critical, that's over there by Muskote, uh, by Spielman's. I mean. It wasn't, it wasn't poor, but. So I just, I just need to know which ones maybe you wanna apply for.
I like go for higher load ratings, right? We're trying to get.
When, when they replace them, it will be legally road limit of the road.
And I'd agree, uh, if we could redec that, that would be cost efficient, but again, I don't know if that's may bang for the buck. Jewel is right in the mix, are the ones that I saw. For this, this is off system.
That's a question too, when they replace them, they'll be wide enough. Of the road. So, because right now Jewel, you can see the equipment marks, like it's so narrow, they're literally rubbing every time.
And then, uh, the other.
What was your number one?
My number. If we could do it, probably the two bridges together. If not, I would probably go with Jewel. Again, the redecking would be something we maybe could handle if, if we don't get any of them. That might be, if we had the money, if we don't get accepted to these and we would have some money, maybe we would look at the redecking ourselves. I think we're kind of similar thinking on, on this. Uh, and then, um, on system.
Uh, well, that's, I wanna let out, I wanna get all of this finished before we move.
Sure, well, I looked at my district first.
Yeah, that's a lot of decisions to be made there.
I, I would echo, uh, exactly what they're saying, I mean, I like the two bridges done together, I also like the one up here, the twenty three oh nine nine, whatever, and it's a. Again, we could redact that, that'd be, that's, that seems to be the worst part of that one. And I like Jewel Road, so those are all good ones.
So you wanna go Jewel number one, decking number two, and the other one, number three, but if we can put the two together, that would become number one.
Maybe number one and number two on the one, I don't know. Again, if we can get a box cover and a bridge, then we can, we can make that work, cause that's just get one bridge.
Alrighty, so I got that. So on the on system. We have, uh. Edwards Road, number seventy between two fifty fours and two forty six, right south of Effingham. We have five thirty and Sherman Road between two forty fourths and two forty, two thirty eights. Number four hundred is Ottawa Road between fifty nine and two sixty two, it's just right off the highway. And then we have one ninety is on two thirty fours between Rooks and Sheridan. What's your?
These were easier for me.
Okay.
Um, so I chose number one as Edwards Road. It was my pick this year because it was the oldest structure, a bus route, mail route, and had a traffic count of eight hundred and fifty four. Uh, I'm, I'm familiar with that road and it's a main artery in and out of Effingham and surrounding communities who utilize it to communicate. Commute to work and school, et cetera. Um, I'm not an engineer by any means, but the underneath of that one. It was showing so much rebar, um, it was very concerning to me, even though I'm not an engineer. So that one, the concrete was really falling apart and I felt like that's a really good road. Um, and with those kind of counts, I think that's your, the better. My second one was Ottawa Road. Um, and that was a top pick as well. Um, however, with the upcoming closure of two sixty two and fifty nine highway. For that, I thought, after talking to Corey, I thought that should be our number two with a different year. Because it'll align, that's their second viable detour route for, uh.
I think we actually have two years to have it.
Well, we don't want this project to align. With that one. Um, and then it was a bus route, mail route and traffic count of four forty, so. Um, I thought that that, those were my top two.
That's my top two.
And I'm, that traffic count on Edwards may be a little high. I hadn't looked at that, but it's still gonna be at least, at least the same as Ottawa.
So much, matter of fact, I mean, cause the all, all of the dirt roads that. Are from Effingham down to one sixteen, on the west side, those are all dirt roads. I guess they did grab all the one down there.
There's, and on the east side, it's same.
Yeah, so there, there's no way to just simply go around that, you have to go. Around quite a ways, that gets a lot of traffic.
And that's one of those where you're driving on a great road, so you don't know what's underneath you, until you know what's underneath you.
Oh, and if you look at the weight limit, I mean, those are, those are a lot of things that, you know, a lot of counties have weight limits on the road. Because the bridges, weight limit is fifteen tons, so they make the whole road fifteen ton.
I tell you, that road gets a lot of traffic that it shouldn't, that should be commercial traffic, that should be off of there too. So if they implode that bridge, that's not on the schedule to be replaced, and it's also fairly narrow.
I think the one that gives me heartburn that doesn't look as bad yet was two thirty fourth, that thing is huge. Huge, and had so much water flow under it, I was like. On two thirty fourth, I mean, it was.
It's a number.
Sorry, I did. It's not a bus route, it didn't. And only showed eighty five traffic, which I think that's low.
Yeah, I'm surprised it didn't show, but we've searched the bus routes, so. So how do you guys wanna rank those then?
Edwards one.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I think we're all.
That was my.
What's your third one?
Third, my third is two thirty fourth.
So one ninety. Are you guys agreeing with that?
That's fine.
I would go along with that.
Okay, alright, so I will get this to Dave and then I will get that information you asked about on the, the tube. And see if that's even a possibility.
So you had us ranked one, two and three, now you'll go back and just choose, well, you'll find out on the. If we can do two or not, but let's use the on as an example, so you got one, two and three, but you'll only go back and get cost estimates per number one.
I believe he'll have them for all.
For all three, so then we can put two and three on a shelf for next time.
Right.
And apply for one, okay, great.
And then we'll see, uh, we'll see how it goes and, and they're kind of changing some of their criteria. When I talked to the, uh, the lady from KDOT that's in charge of the bridge. So we'll just have to keep doing the best we can. I don't think I have anything else, I think I probably take too much time.
No, you're good. I have, um, one purchase order, uh, for BG Consultants. Um, for the architectural services for a road and bridge facility site, um, to be paid out of ARPA. So if I have a motion to approve an amount of four thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to Cedarville.
There is one more thing I'll mention right quick, the functional, functional classification map that we're working with KDOT. On, hopefully will be done within a week and then we can bring it back. And, uh, go over it with the commissioners and you can decide whether you wanna accept.
Yes, they have major collectors and.
Uh, that they have said us, and then I'm going to, uh, uh, try to get a meeting set up with, with Dave Mahoney. And go over the part that has to do with the city and then we'll bring you that information also. So, but just letting you know, and other than that, uh. Hopefully the bridge will be done out here in point oh twenty six four, will be done in two weeks is what they told me, but if it keeps raining. That, they can't pour concrete when it rains, you know, so. Well, it doesn't work so well.
Um, do we ever find out any additional cost of what that is, um, where, I think you took it out? Cost on, uh, solution for that, we said we were taking it out to reassess the, the ground or whatever, what it was. Where on Rollins?
The old bridge, the bridge we took out.
Oh, from the north, but from the south we were talking about.
Seeing, oh, once the bridge was out of the way, what it looks like, like as far as options.
If it came, if you could access it from like the road would have been opened to the south.
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry, there's, I got, no, I went there and there's a, there's gates. Yeah, I know, but I didn't wanna get shot driving so much faster. Yeah, no, I didn't get any farther because I did drive away by, uh. I can't think of their names, but. Yeah, I mean, right by there and when you get up there and there's a set of gates there and I stopped. So I guess, I don't know, I, I'll, I'll go talk to Roger here when I get out of here and ask him about that road. But no, you had me off guard, I'm sorry.
And then we were talking about the four way stop possibility.
So I'm waiting on, on Gabe to give me that information. There, there's supposedly a, several different ways we can do that, but I really don't know how you. I personally don't know how you do that.
Just wanted to remind.
No, it's.
Brought up to the ears, there's a four way stop on, um. Going north. Iowa? Four way stop up there on the, uh, Chippin Seal, or is that?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. So it could have to do with major collector, meeting major collector, let me ask that question.
Oh, okay, oh, I could never forget an idea of why there was a four way stop there. Because one seems, it's the north, south, our road is a Chippin Seal.
It's Kingman. And I wonder, now that we're going through all this, if it has to be with two major collectors intersecting. One of them was a minor collector, then that would be the road that would probably have to stop.
So it's changes on these roads. What's that gonna do to that?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
I think we are. Now, there is a four way stop in a township on, uh, three eighteenth east of the Saint Louis Church. And I don't, is it McPherson or whatever comes from the south, but those signs, they're township signs, but they're always taken down. I think it's certain people don't want them there.
But that just seems like that's a unnecessary stop on the north, south.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll ask. But no, Casey, I talked to Gabe last week about that and he said that was next on his list, so.
Appreciate it.
All right. Hey, anything for me? Okay, you all have a great day, thank you.
Thanks for sending your reminder about next week with the canvas and clarifying that senior village thing, that's great.
That looks good, thanks Mark.
My colleague is on, but I don't know if she was coming in person or.
So her and Belinda were standing outside earlier and I told them, I was like, sorry, we're running a little behind, I think it might be coming down. Sorry, we're running behind, it's story of our life, I swear. I totally. Purchase order? Yeah, for our aerials, okay. Alright, so I have a purchase order in the amount of twenty seven thousand, six hundred forty four dollars and twenty five cents. For the twenty twenty four regional aerial photography to mark, um, that'll be paid out of. The appraiser, um. The general fund. The general fund. As presented by the appraiser, I have a motion to, so this is, I'm trying to remember, uh. This was the project that Debbie had started talking with forty some thousand. Okay, and now it's, yeah.
I actually came to you previously, the city of Ashen, we have an email. From them agreeing to pay for seven thousand of this, so our share is just gonna be a little over twenty thousand. You're actually getting about sixty five thousand dollars worth of work.
I was gonna say, this is a lot less than what we forecasted.
We're tagging it onto Kansas nine one one and, and we have done that, we're. I consider myself a good steward of the taxpayer's dollar. Nine one one council is flying, but they fly everything at, uh, one foot aerial. We want a better quality for much of the stuff that we're doing right now, so we were able to upgrade this to six inch pixel photography. Set up the flight patterns that we wanted, get it done with, uh, better accuracy. And we're doing the whole thing, uh, the upgrade for twenty seven thousand, of which the city has agreed to pay seven. And so our cost is gonna be a few bucks over twenty thousand, which is a good deal for the county.
And how much of the county is actually being.
But we're paying it, so we need the whole amount and then the city reimburses us. Right, got it, right.
Well, if we approve the purchase order for that amount, if the city pays directly to them, then we'll just pay the portion of ours that's.
Yep, okay.
Need the authority to be able to write that.
Cause, yeah, cause last time they wanted to pay directly to Mark and when they did, then we just paid the reduced amount.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes.
How often do we do this?
And I didn't just sign the contract part of it, um, that's on the back. I didn't know if that needed to be reviewed. If one of you wanted to sign off on the contractor. Typically Pat reviews our contracts, but, um. You will wanna pass it to him?
The last one was twenty twenty one. So this will be, this is twenty twenty four, it's already been flown, by the way. Because the, the stipulation guard has to be flown leaf off. Uh, which means before the leaves are on the trees, cause if you've ever seen aerial photography that's done in, uh, April or May. Yeah, you can't see anything on the ground, so we fly it still when it bare and when the weather is good, no cloud cover. There are a number of restrictions, so there are a few days, it has been flown, we told them we were gonna be involved in it. Uh, based on previous discussions.
So the, sorry, the answer was every three years, is that right?
Generally, we get this every three, we, we try and get new aerial photos at least every three years. Uh, the standard is actually getting shorter now, they're wanting it every two years. Most of the communities in the Mark area go for it every two years because, uh, the price is coming down on these things, so.
I asked one more question, cause Mark's considered, would we get a better price if we were, so. I don't wanna speak out of turn, cause I don't know all of it. There was a grant available that I got an email from Mark. And I was looking and there were six counties that were Mark counties. And I reached out to him and I said, hey, would we be eligible for this grant, even though we're not listed as a Mark county? And they said, no, cause you're not a, you're not a participant in Mark. Um, and so I was just curious if we were one of those counties that were a partner with them. Would we be able to do these things cheaper in the future? I don't, I don't know.
We are participating as a Mark county in this event.
That's interesting.
This is going directly through Mark, the contract you just signed is with Mark.
So that's interesting, I might get with you and get some more information because this grant, it had all six counties and they were around us. But Ashson wasn't listed and I specifically said, hey, we're not listed as a Mark county and they said we're not, and so.
We were part of Milk Hand. And we stopped doing that. And then I know once the city, we had, gosh, Mark came up, we had several discussions and so. The way they phrase is we're dating, we're not married.
Okay. And maybe if the city has a connection, maybe we're flying under them like too, like.
Uh, cause they're doing some things with law enforcement and of course dispatchers.
Right, and I knew, I knew going communications was.
What we really need to consider is going with the city and becoming members of Mark and this formula based on. Population, all the costs would be, I can't quote that off the top of my head now, but.
They were really interested in our participation in. Sending people to these meetings and the trainings and everything, and I don't know where we stand with. Uh, I know, uh, Roger's been involved with. I think the trainings and stuff for for this portion of it, but. I think there's other areas that they wanted participation in also.
They, exactly, yeah.
Any regional council and and regional councils grew into fame. Because of the A ninety-five reviews that were required for any federal grant, those A ninety-five reviews were done away with. Probably ten years ago now, I don't know the exact date. But. With any regional council, if you don't participate, you don't get anything out of it. And so the whole thing was, when we were with Mocan. We were doing a few things, but they were not paying a lot of attention to us and and there were some people there who did some things that irritated us. Um, community-wise and commissioner-wise. And so we dropped them. Now, when we dropped them, we had nowhere to go, and so Mark, Alan phrased it very well, Mark said. Don't join, we, i- if not a thing where you can just join, this is the group that put this together. Get in here, deal with this, see if it fits, and then we can see whether or not we want to recreate the group with you in. And so it's not as though, hey, it's just a membership thing, you can join up, it's.
They wanted.
Group that was there, I participate in the GIS community with Mark because. It tells me when things like aerial photography and everything else is going on. Uh, and and it also counts toward my continuing education credit for even a licensure, so. But if you don't participate, you don't hear about it, and so the people who are doing the nine-one-one call. Collaboration with our maintenance work, uh, those are people who I also deal with from that other standpoint, so it should make it.
Gotcha, thank you, I was just curious. Hey, did I put that, you could, oh, he's reviewing.
So the other item that I wanted to kind of bring up was um. Updates that um we want to try to see about making to the neighborhood revitalization tax rebate incentive application. Um. On. And this, and this goes back to um. Getting uh applications after the fact that um. Things happen to the problem. So we want to make the update to page four um C. To include um.
Have you sent that to us or?
I gave us a copy, you saw it last time, but.
The, you weren't here the last, oh, okay.
Uh, hold on, I think I have one still in my. File. Well, you guys pull it up on the website, it's on the website too.
Oh, okay.
Here, Eric, I can send you one.
I could go get her the copies if you want me to, yeah.
If she's got it, it'll be quick.
Yeah, I'll just send it.
Changes you're talking about, set up, that's having to go back to all the entities to get it approved. This is just an application, okay. I've been through that before. Like more than once. Not that it's already, it's just process.
Okay, this one is revised, yeah, this is the one, okay, let me just send you this, Eric, real quick. You need it, Alan, I'll just send it to all of you.
You can do it anyways, it's on the website, but.
Yep.
I've actually filled it out before, but I can't tell you what the line is.
You said page four?
Yeah, on page four.
So I don't, page four C, my page four is statements of findings. Oh, the whole application, not the first part, got it. I'm following you, sorry, I have the whole shebang. Page four. So my application with three pages, so it's. Part one, is that what you're on?
Yeah, part one. The neighborhood revitalization plan summary.
Oh, so it is, okay, it says. We're here, C, to qualify the applicant.
So after it indicates before construction of improvements begins. Um, possibly put in parentheses, including site leveling, uh, removal of trees or shrubs.
What's that again, you put that in?
Uh, letter C, towards the middle.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, and parentheses, including site leveling, uh, comma, removal of trees or shrubs.
That's been, it's been an issue.
It, so, um, yes, so going back, um, we had, we've had um. Four parcels that in um, some of it's prior to my employment. Um, prior to, uh, well, even, it was, it was a previous employee. Um, that approved the applications, um. So, and then. There's. I'll start, I'll just start at the top, um, Lloyd. Um, he's got a property on Nima Hall Road. Um, this one here, it was uh, in July of twenty-three, it was applied for a new house.
So, is that the one that we looked up on the map and we couldn't find?
Yes.
Okay, did you verify? Did you find it?
Um, so. So this is the one that they didn't fill out the uh, complete the floodplain application. And then they ended up filing it. Um, but now it's still, what are we waiting on?
Um, they have not contacted Northeast Kansas Environmental Services, so before the floodplain can be approved. They have to get their septic system approved and they have not done that yet.
And we're coming up on a year since they filed for the application on this one.
So I feel like that was the property we tried to find, remember, and none of the. Owners coincided with it?
Yeah, the names were.
Yeah, there were, that name wasn't on that road. So we're just wondering.
The work is, that's dated, right, so what's on the website, if there's a change in ownership, it might take a month. To show up, let's follow work up. And so.
But that was a year ago.
Yeah, I don't know when the, when the process, and I didn't follow up. Well, I've got a question, like on your, on the C here, and you say to, uh. They must have official project approval, is that gonna be a signature or something because? Evidently. If it. If the floodplain, if there hasn't been a signature or approval from that area, then how, I mean. Someone down the line can just approve it without having someone sign off like from any KES. I mean, what, to me, it seemed like there needs to be like a change of. As it goes past this, it needs a signature, checkmark before, so someone in your office couldn't sign it. It's like, good enough to me, and that there needs to be all of these. This step, next step, next step, the step program. And then it would be signed off on by your office or you before they would have the official. Uh, okay, I mean, to me, it's like there's almost. It's being approved, but it's like by my hearsay or word of mouth, what, what, uh, how do we know that? If you go back, it's like. Roger might say, well, yes, I told him.
We do sign the rebate applications, there's a signature line here.
Or for each one of those, but.
Did you do a site visit? We do a site visit, we, we check it off that yes, we have that information and the.
But there, but evidently things have gotten by that. They, they were, it was approved and they got approved, I mean.
Been a couple that, yeah, and they were done without Holly, I mean, Holly or I didn't.
I'm saying, how do we get a document or a process that ensures it doesn't happen? Because I don't think, we can't have somebody just. Signing off on it and and the approval really hasn't happened.
Mm-hmm, well, and I think that was one, and I don't want to talk about anybody's name, but. The wording of before construction of improvements. Earthwork was a question of like, oh, we didn't realize we couldn't dig a hole. Um, and so the wording, right, of like.
Should it say?
Should it say?
Site preparation, I mean.
Anything, because it was always the understanding to me, like breaking ground, period, like you're not supposed to touch. Touch it, it's supposed to be raw, nothing started for the site visit to come out.
In the past, we did let them level the land, just like if they needed to take trees off of it, we let them remove the trees and leveled the ground. That was it, just level it. No digging, no. But it's not worded that way in the application, it just says before construction of improvements begin, and so somebody could take that meaning.
Well, I didn't start on my house, but I did all this other.
Digging a hole is not an improvement, so, you know.
So just getting the wording right, but if you're putting, removing shrubs and bushes, but you allow them to remove trees. And and level it like. I don't know, you know what I mean, like.
Or should just say before any site preparation.
I think so, something just very, like before doing anything.
I don't know.
Well, I, I. I, I don't know that I can say what's best, but I like that idea, if somebody has done site preparation before and they've done all the earthwork. And maybe even poured a, a foundation, I think they could still come in and apply. It's just that the project wouldn't include the work that they've already done.
Oh.
They could do a project and.
No.
No, we didn't let them, if they had all these set forms, we did not. Yeah.
Well, I think it could be interpreted that way, and the uh, the neighborhood revitalization plan itself is not that specific. And so, you know, I, I will take full blame for that as one of the authors of that. Uh, but that's not, not something that that we considered. Or that I considered anyway when it was being drafted, uh, but I, I don't see any reason why you couldn't have several projects related to the same. Piece of land.
I think that would be very confusing, I think that you would have people jumping off and it's like, then you're gonna have to extrapolate, well, how far along were they? Is the foundation, what is the foundation worth, split off from what the whole cost of the, it, what? I, I think you'd be going down a, uh. A very lot of arduous procedures for you guys to figure out, and it's like, or you're gonna have to have an estimate of what they put into that. For, so now we can't consider it in a project.
Have to have all those things, like you, you have to have all those things.
Well, you have to be able to do that.
You have to submit your estimates to them and they go see it, like.
But how far along were they when, when they applied? So then you're gonna be like, well, on June twenty-fifth, I informed some of them, what does that word? See what I'm saying? I, I don't think that that is a good process at all. I like the original thing, they, and also, we've been saying this and trying to be consistent. For as long as I've heard of the NRP program, and now all of a sudden, we're gonna start allowing something else. Think it's. I, I don't like it.
But I think that's what's happened, so that's why we want to have the discussion to, 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 to get better, all of us, like, right? So like, hey, we found that, and and to your point, Pat, like. We want it to be a resource, we want it to generate, you know, and. How do we get that information out to the public, like, we try really hard, but sometimes if they dug the hole and came in and said. You know, you don't want to say, well, no, like, just cause, you know, I don't know, I, uh. That's, I don't.
And if you're doing this plan, which I've used it a couple of times, it's actually, I mean. The information is really good, the, you're getting a mortgage, your bankers, everybody's really good about saying, be sure and do it right, be sure and get all of them.
Yeah.
I mean, so. Yeah, I think to me, it can't hurt to add more verbiage here, it helps guide them to say, hey.
I like the site.
Be sure.
Cause that's anything, that's like.
So not even leveling the land, removing trees or anything.
I think just site raw, that way you see, there you go, that's what it looks like. Yeah, I like that, I, that wording, I love the wording, yeah.
Yeah, cause next person will say, well, that wasn't really shrubs. Whatever.
Wherever you put a line, somebody will try to pass the trend against it.
I don't know why it's not that hard, is that? That complicated.
Yeah. On the front, on the very, well, on the very first page, we wanted to add in um, a line for target area. And then that way, it's internally for our office, it's a lot easier.
For those cities that have been target areas, like Effingham has one, Atchison has one.
We're just handwriting it in right now and it's just be easier for us.
We just add a line for it, like under parcel identification number?
Uh, yeah.
So it's the first page of the app.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of pages.
I should have straightened on the one.
You probably want the staff assigning whether it's in the target area.
Yeah.
We, we do.
Top part's the owner's law.
So not there.
For county appraisers, use only on page two. Yeah, add it in, add it in there.
Doesn't make sense, yeah.
And I know I wanted to update the um. The mapping, the maps on, some starting on page six, where it indicates that Atchison City target area.
Twenty-seven on ours.
So I just want to highlight target area in orange, the, the words target area, that way it coincides with the map.
That's the updated area, since they've changed things, that's the direct, that's the target area, still, that's all.
Yeah, some people, and we have an employee too, and she was questioning. And some of taxpayers are questioning, since it shows a bigger area of Atchison City, they didn't realize that the target area is only the orange part. Like the green area that's outside of it, they thought two was involved in the target areas, so.
And just as a reminder for us, the target area just has a better incentive than the green area, okay.
It's the older part town.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm, longer length of term and.
Is that pre nineteen forty-eight?
More percentages.
So then you're green on the Atchison City target, does that graph? So then you're green on the Atchison City target, does that graph coincide with Huron City target?
I think that's just municipal boundaries.
The green match like for your chart of like what the application is.
The municipal area.
Okay, and so Huron's target area is the whole.
Yeah, I think they included their whole.
That's how they got highlighted green up there.
And so Effingham's their whole area too. And even though Effingham's within the Benton Township target area map.
We can fix any of those you need to fix. The target area itself was considered to be that area in all.
Maybe if we just made it white all around it and not.
I think that would be less confusing. That's a good idea.
And even on the next page, the Benton Township and.
All of those.
The Huron, if you could just put the white around anything that's not target area.
Why is, I mean, the Effingham portion of Benton Township, it's actually don't have anything to do with Benton Township.
Effingham City target?
Effingham City is their own entity.
Effingham City?
Just the green part, which is Effingham.
But Effingham is in the target area as well.
Well, it is the target area of itself, it's, they, they signed the agreement, there, it's like. Uh, the city of Atchison, it's. Is the phrase in Benton Township target area, is that part of another document, so you have to reference it that way? If it's not, I mean, I would just call.
I don't remember producing these, so, and, and I know I must have, but, uh, it's been quite some time ago.
I, I think Benton also signed off on the agreement, so. Reason they had to be separate, if you were within the city. If, they will have Benton taxes and city taxes. In a city of the third class, the. The area that's within the city limits is part of the township as well. And so that's why they're listed separately, but they are. In Huron's case, the township around it was not included. I don't think they were, not, not all of the townships. I was just wondering, because it's all like two different ways of show.
Should it be labeled Benton Township and Effingham City target area?
I don't know, I. If, if somebody lives within the city of Effingham. I suppose they could be confused by it, people who live outside the city of Effingham, but live in Benton Township, I don't see that they'd be confused, so. Benton does not have a target area.
They are in.
Benton went with the, just the regular and Effingham is on that filed for the. Target, the targeted area or the enhanced enhancement. That's where I'm getting the difference, so.
I'm having confusion between participating communities. Target area that I'm thinking of was a much higher rate of return.
Benton's a participating at the regular rate.
I'm not trying to disagree, but I understood it that Benton did sign the target area and then they had to get Effingham. To sign off on it too, because three seventy seven school districts. Is in Effingham and Benton, and so the question was, so. If Effingham doesn't participate and Benton is in the target area, what do we do with the Effingham City? So then they had to approach the city, this is how I remember it, then they had to approach the city and ask if they would be willing to. Be in the target area as well.
We'll have to look at the documentation, but I don't think Benton done the target area. Uh, because I went to Benton meeting, I went to Effingham City meeting, uh, when we were working on this. And I know that Effingham is definitely a target area, I do not think Benton is a target area.
We probably need to ask Michelle then because.
And we'll check those documents. Now Benton was definitely a participant, but at the normal rate, the way I remember it, so. I guess, I can't say a hundred percent, but I think that's the way.
I just have to over here to clear up one issue, when Belinda had me produce these maps a couple of years ago. The green areas are just incorporated city areas. Put them off there just for the city limits.
Hey, so, so then if those were, that's why, cause they're city limits. Perfect, no, thank you for clarifying that, that makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
They, they need to tell whatever it is we're trying to project, and I'm not. Perfectly clear on what we're trying to project at the moment, but, but once we figure it out, then we will make them read.
So. Will you get with Michelle then and look at those and see what was signed on them?
I can for, well, I can forward you to like, cause Pat gave a, a summary of everything. When this happened in September of twenty one. Cause he had notated all of his meetings he went to, so I can forward that to you guys as well.
Point is, if you're the target area, it's a different schedule than if you're not targeting, so it's just a matter.
It's more aggressive, right?
And it was a higher, higher percentage.
Which is interesting, Art, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Are townships able to create a target area?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, well, cause you always hear like, oh, the county needs more development, the county, you know, and so. Just for people that are looking to do, um. Subdivisions or whatever they're doing. Yeah, that's why I was just, it would be nice to have those conversations with their townships of, hey, you could create a target area here and. It's a win-win for everybody, but just a thought.
Was one of the early authors of the N R P and Atchison County designated the entire county as being. Eligible or being that a target area, if you will, and subsequently. Um, the state has suggested that that's not appropriate. Uh, but we had already done it, we're already doing it that way, so we continue to. Do it with this iteration of the agreement. So there is a, there are at least some, some people that argue that you could not have the entire. Municipality being a target area like a Benton Township, yeah. It's another example of Atchison County tends to stir things up in the capital city once in a while.
We just listed in the plan too that Benton Township is target area.
I frankly don't remember, they, they need in the Effingham building, right? Is that Benton? I think the last time I went to their meeting, which was then, that they were meeting at, uh, their. Dunsters, uh, their, the guy that was their patrolman. They met at his house and shop. I'm, I'm, I went with, I met with them because you were meeting with another township, I think, at the same time. Oh, well, that could be one, same way with the city of Effingham, I'm, I met with them.
Cause I think you went to Muskota one night and he went somewhere else and I remember you guys divided and conquered, like. They did, they did.
Confused maybe. I'll be interested in that, yes.
Oh, cause it says Grasshopper too, have all agreed to participate in more robust rebates. So maybe that's why. Where it says overlap between target and non-target areas. Atchison County, the city of Effingham, city of Huron, Benton Township, Grasshopper Township. USD three seventy seven and USD four oh nine have all agreed to participate in more robust rebates. Contained in table two target area rebates.
What page is that?
Thirty six.
On page thirty four is the different, the charts of the rebates, the. Table one's the non-target, table two is the targeted area, so if you're interested in that's thirty four.
So it extends at five years. Where did you read Grasshopper? In the third paragraph under overlap between target and non-target areas.
On page. Page five. Oh, that's not, that's not.
Based on our rebate application, we don't have it listed in the target area, that's what I was thinking.
There's. There's confusion on my part right now, there are participating areas and target area. And we need to more clearly delineate and define which are which, so that. So that the confusion is not there. In my opinion.
No, I totally agree.
Page eight of the application, the rebate spreadsheets, it lists the. Non-target area percentages and the participating entities first. And then the target area chart and their participating entities, so.
What page was that?
It's eight of the application, so. I'm not sure on the plan what you're looking at, but.
Um, Art, is that twenty nine maybe on ours, tax rebate spreadsheet, where it has the sub? Is that where you're seeing? So even though that paragraph says that the robust. Rebate of those this school districts and, and Grasshopper, they're not actually.
I don't believe they're getting the. And, and again, I'll check with Michelle on that. Um, but no, we have Grasshopper up in the non-target area.
And then just a question on the use of Atchison County, because it's on both. Both of them? And like, how would you interpret that?
Well, the whole county is not in the target area, but the whole county is included in the rebate program as a participant.
But isn't that the target area, Atchison County?
And so that's why it's listed in both, because there are parts of Atchison County in the non-target and parts in the target.
Okay, so it's just a blanket for both.
Fifteen year kind of plan. So, yeah.
Yeah, and same as four oh nine, USD three seventy seven, they are included in both. And so that's why they're listed in both, some areas of three seventy seven are in the target, some are not.
Maybe it's called the basic plan and the expanded plan versus target, non-target, is it, whatever the words, I think it's the verbiage or something.
And I wonder if this would be historic or what was just updated, you know what I mean, was Grasshopper in the school district's target area previously?
I think they had target area. Twenty, I think Trey Cawkin came up to us when they wanted to, uh, do this downtown Atchison and they, they proposed the. Target area, and I think we had to modify the, the whole plan. To be able to allow for that, so then when it came up for, to re-up. Then it was open for other entities to apply for that.
That was about four years into the term, so the term prior to twenty twenty one. Yes, about four years in, they decided they wanted, like Eric said, and so at that time, it was just the city that had the target area. Then this last time when you guys renewed it, that's when they expanded to Benton. And the city of Effingham and Huron.
We, we need to locate Grasshopper for sure, because in the. Document itself, it, it's ambiguous, it's not ambiguous, it's contradictory, in one part they're listed as in the target and another they're listed as being non-target.
And what the overlaps mean, yeah, I don't know.
But it is confusing, because you could be in both. At once, because as a taxpayer, if you're in Benton and they're participating in that, you're getting a different rate. On your Benton Township taxes, but the county taxes are at the normal. So you're, you, you're kind of overlapping two different, or maybe three, because in three seventy seven, how. There, that only applies to their portion of the tax.
And I think Michelle was involved in that discussion, if I remember correctly, because she needed to know how to, uh, put it in her system. I know it had something to do with Effingham City and they, and they agreed if it was in the target area, that they would go ahead and pay the target area rates or whatnot. That's about all I remember.
A lot to keep track and make sure this.
Don involved, he's really involved with a lot of that too, he, he did it pretty well.
Like he helped us last time, so he came up and remember Dawn came with Justin?
Yeah, I remember, yeah. I'd be careful just changing any wording that's tied to any other documentation with other taxing entities as far as how they identify things. If they're, if they're calling it target and non-target, maybe if you stuck with the verbiage, I don't know. Otherwise you're going around to all those entities again to get it all rubber stamped. I have a fairly big file on N R P, a paper file at my office, and I obviously didn't look at it, I'll go see what those notes are.
May leave it at that for now and then we'll go check with Michelle on the Grasshopper and the Ben and. Maybe we group again. Yeah, that's good.
So any applications that are. Were approved that shouldn't have been, do we have any recourse on those?
Um, so there's one, um. The one on two hundred and seventy fourth street, that's one that's, um, there was no floodplain application approval for it. And the, I mean, the construction was commenced, um, and they did have the N R P approval on that one.
Did they get an address?
It's on, well, it falls within the same property of their, um, home address. And so that one, we ended up sending a letter, uh, to get their part two of the N R P with their final cost. And we do have that. But that one fell within the floodplain.
We required it until they did the floodplain, get that signed off on, they, they don't get the N R P.
But that was one that was approved prior. Right.
The one we're holding on to of pages, they applied back in July, I think that's the first. And we were thinking, since they did turn in the floodplain management application finally, but they haven't talked with any K S. We were thinking we should just make them reapply for the rebate application.
That's, that's one, I wanted to bring that forward too, to see.
Rather than holding on to it, she did tell me that they are doing. Different plans than what they had submitted in this application, and they would have revised costs to give us.
And that's why I was thinking that they should go ahead and reapply. And that's why I was thinking that they should go ahead and reapply since they're revising.
Does it say on the application that if it hasn't been acted on in a year that it's? You have to reapply, that might be a.
Once it's approved, they have to start construction within a year. But it doesn't talk about. It it says that we have fifteen days to approve them from when they apply. Were granted at least fifteen days, which I think you took that verbiage out too, but. Um, yeah. So that we weren't tied to having to have them approved in fifteen days, if I remember correctly. But I don't think it states anywhere how long we're gonna hold it until we approve it.
Is that something we need?
Question.
Sometimes. The the things when I was approving them, which I'm doing again, you know, now, right now. Sometimes the things that would hold people up would be the city having, we had to have a city building permit. Well, they didn't get that until the contractor would go to city hall and apply, and they didn't do that until they were ready to start construction. So sometimes that would be what would hold us up. In the city. From being able to get them approved. In the county, it's mostly that floodplain. Application, which they can't approve that until they get approval from Northeast Kansas Environmental Services.
So if we're not in compliance with a floodplain. Plane. It wasn't signed off on, we allowed it to happen. Well, how does that manifest itself? I mean, can we be fined? County be fined?
I don't know.
You know Roger?
Probably Roger. I I. I don't know of a way that the county could be fined, but I suppose the. Uh, I'm I'm gonna speak.
Would it fall back to the property owner? Would it?
Well, we we also have a resolution that. Allows for prosecution of people who violate it, who construct things without. Yeah, we've never prosecuted anybody under it. Um, but it's in the the resolution. I, Eric, you know, I don't know if there's.
I think he's addressing the NRP more than the development permits. The development permit is a misdemeanor, but I think I I.
No, I'm I'm talking about i- if we're. Subject to state rule of on having building in a flood, correct?
Right.
And if we don't abide by it or or. We allow people to build in a floodplain. Even if it's in error, but then, I mean, what ramifications? Does the state have or uh that? You're not in compliance.
There is a clause in that uh resolution of adoption. Uh, that we do for. FEMA or Division Water Resources that says violation. Uh, of the permitting is a misdemeanor punishable by five hundred dollars. Per occurrence.
But couldn't this also? Exclude us from future FEMA payments? And federal? Loans?
I don't know the answers to that. FEMA's avenue against us on anything that occurs inappropriately and and. Going back to the origin of the development permit. Uh, the reason this occurred is because. Uh, the Division Water Resources came to me. And said, they told me we were out of compliance. Now, my first response was, I don't know why you're talking to me because this has nothing to do with me. But then I found that my name had been placed on a document saying I was the floodplain manager. I was unaware of that. And the uh Tom Laurie of uh. Division Water Resources explained to me that I was the floodplain manager and that if we didn't bring the county into compliance, that what would occur? Is that they would place us on probation. And then look at suspending us from the program. And I. Asked uh what I would need to do, and the first thing I did is I went for a week's worth of training. Uh, with Division Water Resources in Wichita, I got educated as to exactly what. My responsibilities were supposed to be as being signed on to that line. And then I went to the commission and said. Uh, the state has asked us to bring this into compliance that everyone has to issue a development permit. Uh, if we don't, then we're not in compliance and they will cite us for that. And if we don't bring it into compliance, we'll be placed on probation. And then if you don't. Resolve the issue within a year, then you're suspended from the program. Once you're suspended, the results are, they would be devastating for Atchison County. Uh, my little research shows that uh there are no counties in the state of Kansas that do not participate. There are. I think I looked yesterday and it's somewhere around a dozen communities that are currently suspended, like seven of them are from the same county. Uh, but once you're suspended, these. I can't truly identify and give you a list of things that it says would happen to you. Uh, but all of them, uh, there would be no sense in a neighborhood revitalization program anymore because the results of having. Uh, yourself on suspension with with FEMA would be far worse than anything that you can grant them.
So I have a question, because this, I kind of got information in it, uh, my Kansas County Commission Conference of. Asking other counties, like, what are you doing? What does it look like for your county? All the things. And even from zone counties perspectives of. I didn't feel the feedback I got was they weren't really married together, right? Of like. What you said, are we talking about the NRP program or are we talking about this? And so I was just curious if that's something we do specific because, for instance, there's a township um in in my district that's anti-NRP. Okay, we've had many discussions about it because I've always been pro-NRP because my understanding of. Of the whole program is to incentivize. New incentivize, build the tax basis, like, yes, you're gonna get an incentive to be rebated here, but. After that, then the county has that tax basis, right? And that's been my understanding. But they would say, you know, no, it's just a way to jump through the hoops and have to. You know, fault all the restrictions and all the things. And I'm like, no. Like, I didn't, I didn't see it that way. And so I'm just wondering, like, is that a, should it be a standalone program? Like, because I know. Floodplain application is something and every county I talked to absolutely has one. There's a floodplain manager, you know, and it's more of a resource, like. Okay, you want to build here, I'm telling you, you're not gonna get a loan, you're not gonna get flood insurance. You can't put a lagoon here because it's the safety of the community, all the things. But even with the zone counties, they're like. People still do things and then there's not an inspector, right? Of like, we're more of a resource telling them, we're we're a resource telling them. It's up to, this is your risk, right? As long as it's not affecting someone else. And then also there were times where they changed the floodplain map. And they paid like thousands of dollars. And then when that timeline comes around again, which is every. What, ten years? I don't know when they come around with your maps and like alter, update your floodplanes based on your watershed dams and all the things, then. The alterations that were paid for got put back. As it was before. Does that make sense? And so then you're like, well, I paid to get this altered, but then when it came back around. So I don't know, it's just, it's interesting. I like to learn about what other counties are seeing and doing and what we're doing, but have you? Seen any of that or?
I think I got three questions in there.
Okay.
The first question is, is it a standalone program? And the answer to that is yes, they are both standalone programs.
Okay.
The reason there is a checkbox on the development permit. For the NRP.
Okay.
Is because the county commission at that time. Uh, they had done all they could do to try and notify people. About it and everybody still said, well, we didn't know it was out there. And so by putting the check.
Program.
Yes.
Okay.
So we put a checkbox on there because then if they're applying and they don't know what it is and they say, what's this checkbox? We can say. Oh, that's a neighborhood revitalization program. Go upstairs and talk to the appraisers and you can get an application for that.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's why that checkbox is there. The reason. The NRP requires that you be in conformance with all other county regulations. And that's why that ties them back to have you submitted your. Your development. So that's the only two ways that those are tied together.
Okay.
The third question. Uh, dealt with.
The alteration of the maps. The alteration of the.
The alteration of the maps and whether uh now zoning. Zoning is defined by statute as land use control. Okay, so. Although we want to say this is not zoning. By pure definition. Restricting development in the floodplains is in itself a zoning issue. Now, I say that because we can say, no, it's not. And if we don't have one, it's a standalone issue. Uh, the city of Atchison, city of Lovren North, uh, many of these other communities, they actually have zoning ordinance. And so the floodplain management becomes just a chapter in their zoning. Okay? So I'm trying to say that and I don't want to say, oh, yes, 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 we have this. What I am telling you is, in reality, it is a land use control. Okay?
Yeah.
Now. Um, there was another part to that question, uh, changing of the maps. The maps change when. Uh, Division Water Resources through FEMA comes back to us and says. We've done another hydraulic study and we've adjusted our numbers and here's what they should be. Um, as there are certain things I have no control of. Uh, for instance. The first thing is there's a checkbox, are you in the floodplain? Are you in floodway? And if they check either of those boxes, then there's a hoop that has to be jumped through that I don't have an ability to approve. Both of those hoops require. The Division Water Resources to sign off on those. And and they're not real friendly about doing that. And I must tell you. Uh, it's just very difficult. Uh, we've had some. Uh. We have an individual who's actually a county employee who bought a house that had, as you talked before, had a letter of map amendment. To say that this house was not in the floodplain. And when the new study was done, those letters don't comply again. So what we were able to do is. We went back to the original, we got the surveyor to take another look, we got him to verify the elevation, and then we worked it through. FEMA rejected it from me twice before I went back and said, okay, what is your real issue here? And so uh again, we'll try and work with people the best we can to do it. I just don't have the ultimate authority until I get them to say this is okay, because otherwise I'm violating. And so I, uh, the maps we have right now, which the county adopted those maps as part of their two thousand fourteen resolution. Okay, in in two thousand fourteen, May fifth of two thousand fourteen, we approved a resolution. Adopting those floodplanes and reestablishing all of the rules that we operate on. That resolution is not our product. And they'll say it is. But it's our product that we had to submit to the Division Water Resources for their approval before we could pass it and they would accept it. They have to approve whatever our resolution is. Otherwise, we can be found uh in. Uh, we can be suspended for not having the appropriate resolution.
Well, and and I thought the upshot of being kicked out of the program, if you will, is that uh. People within the jurisdiction couldn't participate in flood insurance program.
Uh, there is a list of things I can. Read that list for you. If you're not in the program. If you're not in the program, you're suspended, same act. And here are the thing, no property owner or renter would be able to purchase a flood insurance policy. Existing flood insurance policies will not be renewed. No federal grant or loan for development may be made. Or identified flood hazard areas under programs administered by federal agencies. No federal disaster assistance may be provided to repair insurable buildings located in identified flood hazard areas. For damage caused by a flood. No federal mortgage insurance or loan guarantees may be provided in identified flood hazard areas. Federally insured or regulated lending institutions such as banks and credit unions must notify the applicants seeking loans for insurable. Buildings that flood hazard areas, that there is a flood hazard and that the property is not eligible for disaster relief. Now, your first question would be, well, this only affects people in flood hazard area. Well, there are two other provisions that I will just. Uh, lay out as possibilities. The first possibility is that currently. If you have any blood touching your property, since we issue a permit, we can say your development's not in that. In that floodplain. Prior issuing these, I'll give you an example, uh, Rob Emery, you know where he is on one sixteen right there. He's got a little bit of corner down there at the base. That is in the floodplain. His building sits way up above it. Because we didn't issue permits. The the federal lending institution says you have flood prone area. Adjacent to your property, you must. Get us a certificate of elevation to prove that you're not in that floodplain. So he spent thousands of dollars getting a surveyor in because those elevation certificates can only be provided by a licensed surveyor. Okay? There was an advantage to them for us developing permits because had we been issuing permits at the time he built that. Then he would not have had to go get that elevation certificate because we could have validated he was not in. Okay? Um, the other side of the coin is this. That there is also. A general thought that if you didn't have a resolution. Adopting that floodplain map, then your entire county is considered to be in the floodplain. So they they don't play fair, okay? Uh, you could say, oh, no, you don't have to adopt it. But what I have found is in the state of Kansas, there are zero counties that aren't in it. In the, in the United States, there are like two counties. In the entire United States, two counties, and they're currently both on suspension. And that's it. So it's not as though, oh, you don't have to do this. There's no question, it's extortion.
And the old, and so the reason NRP is tied to it is an informational like.
I, yes, we're only tied to it because we have something that says you have to comply with all the county guys, with all the county regulations. So I hope that was informative.
Yes.
Not trying to push it anywhere it shouldn't go. Uh, it should information for your peruse.
Appreciate it. I love information.
And if you ask me to go ask questions about it, I'm gonna tell you. I don't want to go ask questions because you start asking questions about anything like that, you're gonna throw up red flags and then we're gonna be on somebody's list. And I don't want to do that. Okay?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Did you have any other questions?
No. Don't think so. Oh, with um the void page one, since, because he's coming up on a year since he applied for the NRP. Um, now that he's making revisions and everything, um, would you agree that, you know, if we were to ask him to reapply and? For the NRP program?
It makes sense. I get your call.
So if I were him, I would want to reapply because costs have went up extremely like a lot in a year. And so it's in his best interest to show you. Today's estimates versus what he showed you a year ago.
Right.
Would be mine. But it's your call, but that was, it's in his best interest to reapply, I feel. So. Thank you.
I did, um, I received an email that. He needed to be done by some.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Um, Michelle. Okay, Michelle sent us other um county building use information too, that. If you want to see any.
Uh, mine. I need to plug mine in.
Okay.
Mine just went dead thinking. I forgot to pack my.
Sorry, you put me through. Um, county counselor updates, do you have?
Um, just the very briefest, um, the insignes on Atchison Senior Village. Insignes application to K Dads for. Insignes application to K Dad's for approval was put on hold because our bill of sale. Listed the operator as the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas. And K Dad's records has the operator listed as Atchison County, Kansas. And so the bill of sale, and they're basically based on the bill of sale that we submitted. Uh, that bill of sale, uh, they asked me, Insign asked me if, uh, they could interliniate that is add to that. The words AKA Atchison County after the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas. Uh, and I, uh, gave them advice that, that I thought we could do that. Or I authorized them to do that on behalf of the county because functionally that's what was intended. Uh, I just really wanted to let you know that, uh, no actions necessary, we don't need this. Re-sign something unless, uh, unless K Dad's rejects that interlineation.
Do you have a motion to approve this week's expenses? Moved in second and any discussion? Hearing none, moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Um, I don't have any unfinished business or need for any other executive session, so, um. I feel like we can adjourn into a workshop, uh, for budget workshop and then be, when we're done with workshop, we're done. So I would look for a motion to adjourn, uh, into a twenty twenty-five budget workshop with the sheriff. For jail, emergency management and dispatch, do I have a motion to approve? Seconded, all those in favor say aye.